The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under the government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now call this Monday, April twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, Ray Lurkport of Education for the Southwestern City School District. The order, roll call please. Mr. Bosso here. It's Johnson.
Here.
That's Martindale.
Here.
Mr. Schreiner.
Here.
Mr. Caldwell. Here. Now we'll accept a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So move, Schreiner.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Can we have one more? Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
It's Martindale.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
It's Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell. Yes. Enter packet or the minutes from the April twenty, I'm sorry, from the March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. We have a motion to accept the move.
The move.
Thank you, Mr. Bosso. Any kind of second? Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any additions or corrections to the events? Hearing non-roll call, please. Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
It's Johnson.
Yes.
It's Martindale.
Mr. Schreiner. Yes.
Mr. Caldwell. Yes. All right, great. Now we're going to move on to our presentations. First, we're going to hear from our adult learning help. Morning. Good afternoon. It's Monday.
Good evening, President Caldwell, Vice President Schreiner, Mr. Bosso, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Martindale, Dr. Wise, and Mr. Garci. I am excited to have the opportunity to speak to all you concerning our adult training hub at the Career Academy. I know this Denise Pizica, and I am the Training Hub Coordinator, recently retired, but rehired. So we started this just a year ago, last spring, with seed money from the state of Ohio. And our goal was to provide a workforce development program and improve outcomes for our families and students. We pretty, we tried to very much target the unemployed, underemployed, or low income. And we've been pretty successful with that. And many of the students, for instance, we just had a graduate from our welding program last fall. And she was a graduate from Suffolk Percy High School. And I had a Westland graduate come in just yesterday to join our auto program late. And he's pretty excited because he's currently unemployed. Oh, the instructors, sorry. The instructors mostly come from the district. Our nurses did the STNA program. Our adult welding program, we hired a professional in the industry. And actually, he became our welding teacher because our other teacher left. So it was very good timing. We offered computer skills for the workplace, electrical concepts, the electrical concept course. We did in conjunction with the Electrical Trade Center, and we have a, we have, it's great that we have non-traditional members of our groups that don't typically, we don't necessarily have that many women, they're electricians or welders, and they are very marketable. And from our electrical trades program, we had a woman that had three children. She worked with her husband. She came just to learn a little bit about electrical trades because they had a home improvement. And she was hired by the Electrical Trades Union, and she now has insurance for herself, for her husband and her children. So that was pretty cool. Welding and STNA we offered in the fall. We're currently offering automotive maintenance and welding. And with future courses, we hope to repeat the ones we've had and also add a few other ones. The CNC program, if we can do that. And we've been very lucky. We've hired, even though now our welding teacher is a teacher, he had to co-workers from his organization that are willing to teach, and they partner. We have the classes on Monday and Wednesday evenings, which is a big commitment for our employees that are nurses during the day, and then they do this in the evening. And also for people in industry that are, that they're very, they're very excited about providing an opportunity for families in the community. We have countless people that are thanking us for the training hub just this week. It's not up there, but I got a email from someone in welding, and he said, I want to write and thank you for everything you guys do. I have really bad social anxiety and learning from Kaylee and the other trainer is invaluable. And I again, thank you for the opportunity to better my family's life. And that's kind of what we're trying to do, is upskill people. So even if they have, and most of our, most of our participants have full-time jobs. So it's a big commitment for them also to work all day and then come for four hours in the evening twice a week. And I'm pretty much make attendance mandatory because I think if you don't encourage that, it's so easy to say, hey, I'm not going to do this this evening. So if someone's not there, I call them, I text them, and I email them. So they're very good about attending. We've had seven, seven different instructors so far, and we've had, sorry, number of hours? Oh, eight weeks. Yes, we, we have classes from five to nine, twice a week. And for the STNA certification, it was seventy-nine hours as required by the state. And I don't know if you're familiar with the STNA, which is the nursing program. They have a practical exam and a written exam, and it's tough. And we are participants were from age twenty to fifty-five. And all ten took the test on the date that we gave it passed, and that's pretty unheard of. So they were all very, very, very committed, and you can't just come to class and expect to pass. You have to do work outside of that. In addition to that, we get our pretty, our, any of our skill trades, so electrical welding. And then in addition, STNA, we make sure that whatever certifications or credentials we can give them that are marketable when they leave us. We do that in context of the program. This first aid and CPR is in addition to the eighty hours for STNA. And they were all certified as well, as well as our electrical and our welding students. And then our electrical students also received OSHA certification, and the Electrical Trades Union was nice enough to come in and do that at no cost to the district. So with the, we couldn't do this without people helping. We have a grant from the state of Ohio that provides us with the money to pay the instructors and pay a coordinator. And then that's not for materials. So the materials comes from Pathways Financial has given us a donation, and they've committed to give us donations in the future. And Performance Auto, this is the first time we've partnered with them. They are teaching our auto class at no cost. So they provide, and they send two instructors twice a week to teach that at no cost to the district. So that's, that's pretty awesome. And then our last partner was Gristity, and thankfully, we have that because that gives, they granted fifty thousand dollars towards materials. Because the money that we get from the state is only for the salaries, it's not for materials. And I think Mayor Sage wants to address that. Thank you very much.
Wow, I feel so inferior here. Incredible program. I haven't been an adult student twelve years after graduating from high school. We are in different characters, aren't we? Adults do like to learn, and they want to participate, and they're because they're doing it on their own. But when we found out about this program, and I, we'd been talking to the Career Center in the past about the need to fill that gap, as the state has also discussed. And when, when the, we were able to hear and be part of the Career Center, we were just so pleased. And it's just an incredible program. The fifty thousand dollars, I did bring it tonight. I didn't know if you ran out of money yet or not. And, and the agreement is pretty clear. The first agreement to fashion aid the Southwestern School District Adult Training Hub to connect the underemployed, the unemployed, low-income adults to short-term credentials and skills that align with the demand and career. Which, you know, says it all. And my hat's really off to you as a school board in recognizing this opportunity. And I will say this, this came out of the appropriation ordinance, which is only approved at the end of the year. But if you need more money.
Yes.
Put this out there. Please, please let us know because this is such an important thing. With the kind of businesses we have in Grove City, it's really important to make sure that we're doing, all of us are doing the things that we can do to get the employees out there. So with that, I give you a big kudo, Hobbie. Thank you. Our side, I do have another check. Two million, one hundred and fourteen dollars, one hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. This is a result of an agreement we did, I think in about two thousand and four, two thousand and five. We made the first payment, I think in two thousand and seven. And altogether, I think we have a close to thirty million dollars. It's been a result or agreement between the city of Grove City, Southwestern City Schools. And it's a result of what happened down at the Buckeye Parkway Center, use of the TIF. And some other things that people go, oh, don't do those things. But we've had an excellent result as, as part of that as well. So many thanks to the school. I did not acknowledge you when I stepped here, up here. I'm sorry. The last thing is people say, you know, Mayor, what, what's one of the things that you really can say that you're, you're very proud of? And it's quite an accomplishment. And I actually have two, and it involves these goals. One of them is Central Crossing. And I don't know, I don't think, well, Kathy might have one, Ms. Johnson, you might have one, don't know the word at that time. I mean, Central Crossing coming to Grove City. And the other one was the Beal Park Middle School. And that could not have been done without all of us on the same page and doing it all for our citizens. So thank you very much.
When Mayor, we're going to fix your check. Anytime you get us two million.
And A-Drive.
I must have been.
She was.
What you want.
She's on the line.
Are you all ready?
Oh, there we go.
It's a win-win.
Everybody heads back to their seats. Denise, we appreciate the great work. Mayor, we appreciate the city's continued support. This is a great opportunity for the district to be able to serve outside of our normal K-12 perspective. One of the things the board has been very good at is extending our resources in such a way that it benefits the community. When we can do that at no cost to the district, and the adult learning hub and those dollars have allowed us to do exactly the types of things we want to do for this community. To invite those in, them in to use those facilities to create good, high-paying jobs for our communities, to be able to provide stability for families. So as Mayor said, this truly is a win-win. For business folks out there that read about this in the paper or see us online. We're open to many other opportunities. If you have needs for employees, we would be glad to be part of that solution. And so we can, we can use our facilities and our Career Center in such a way that, that benefits all. So if you have a high-demand job and you're looking to hire at a living wage, we're here for you, and we'd be glad to continue to support that. So thank you to Denise and all the folks, city and others who have been part of that initiative.
Thank you all. We have our presentations. Next, we have a presentation on professional development.
Good evening, President Caldwell, Vice President Schreiner, Mayor Jacob Ward, Dr. Wise, and Mr. Garci. I'm Erin McCloskey. I'm our Coordinator of Staff Development. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share with you just some of the great learning opportunities that we have coming to the district this summer. I'm going to have you go and go to the next slide. Before we get to the optional learning opportunities that the district can choose to attend. I would first like to share with you the required trainings that staff must complete. The top portion of the slide, you'll see training that's required of all employees. And the bottom portion outlines the additional training required for certificated and administrative employees. Many of these trainings are required yearly, while others are on a two- or five-year rotation. And though the information involved in these trainings is very valuable and necessary. None of these required trainings impact teaching and learning in the classroom as far as instruction. So just keep that in mind. I shared this first with you to highlight and then celebrate that in addition to these required trainings. We have a lot of staff choosing to dedicate their own time to further develop their knowledge and skills. And at the same time, you can see the incredible competition, the pool between their personal time and requirements of their job. On the next slide, we're going to look back briefly to the summer of two thousand and twenty-two and the professional development offerings that were available to staff. In June, we offered forty-three professional learning opportunities. Two hundred and seventy-five staff members chose to participate in those offerings. In August, we had forty-eight professional learning opportunities available, and six hundred and eighty staff chose to participate in those activities. Overall, we offered ninety-one professional learning opportunities, which equates to two hundred and fifty-six point five hours of professional learning. And nine hundred and fifty-five staff members participated during non-instructional time. One of the reasons those professional development hours are such a celebration is because every five years certificated staff require to complete a hundred and eighty hours of continuing education credit or six semester hours to renew their license. And if you take a look at what we've been able to offer in just one summer. Teachers are able to capture valuable professional learning opportunities without ever having to leave the district. And that's, that's quite an accomplishment that we're very, very proud of. On the next slide, you can see, we've taken some time to look back historically at some of our top-attended professional learning offerings. And in reviewing that, the largest number of participants typically fall in our literacy offerings, our math offerings, and our technology. So our digital tools and our digital curriculum resources. That work continues throughout the year. It doesn't just happen during the summer with our content specialists and our coaching community. Along with the guidance of our content specialists and our coaching community. We've been able to extend in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year with our Columbia University, our partnership. That again afforded us on the next slide, the opportunity for the schools listed to have a teacher trainer working with the teachers to continue the learning focused on developing skilled readers, writers, and enquirers. And now summer's here, and we're preparing for what lies ahead for learning opportunities for staff. So on this slide, you're going to see that reading and writing will continue to be a focus with professional learning opportunities available through K-12 for all teachers in our homegrown institute facilitated again by Columbia University. On the next slide, you can see that our grade K-six literacy and math coaches are collaborating this year to offer a literacy summer series plus. This two-day event will provide participants with the opportunity to select from a wide variety of topics to personalize their own learning experience. And on the next slide, along with the literacy summer series plus, this is also part of that. There will be opportunities for participants to select cross-grade level and cross-content-focused sessions that highlight the various curriculum resources, as well as provide guidance for how to incorporate effective reading and writing instructional strategies into all classroom settings. On the next slide are some additional learning highlights. Grade K-three teachers will be participating in two structured literacy pilots focusing on phonics. Pending board approval, grades seven through twelve ELA teachers will have a variety of curriculum adoption learning opportunities scheduled for later this August. And grades nine, twelve, will have probabilities and stats pilot participants receiving training. Probabilities and stats equates to the geometry credit that is necessary for graduation. So this pilot next year will allow us to explore how many students might be interested in pursuing and taking this course in the future. As you saw earlier, technology is a specific highlight for us. So we have Techno Day coming June fourteenth. Classes will be designed to further promote and develop strong instructional strategies utilizing district-supported tools and resources. And all Techno Day classes will be held virtually and include components of digital wellness and safety. And on the next slide, in addition to our content area-focused classes. We will also be offering a variety of sessions that will provide new learning, help strategies, and resources to increase and support student and family sense of belonging. All of the sessions on this slide reinforce and are designed to help support the district focus that you belong here. On the next slide, you'll see the dates of our academy offerings. Our June offerings will run from June fifth through the ninth and June twelfth through the sixteenth. Our second session will run July thirty-first through August fourth and August seventh through eleventh. All those sessions are available at Central Crossing, and I'd be happy to make all of those sessions available to you once the catalog is live. You are more than welcome to join and attend any of those sessions if you're interested. Our building orientation day will be August ninth, and our new staff orientation days will be August fifteenth and sixteenth.
Any questions?
Just a comment before the mayor leaves. These are three of my favorite, I guess, pride things that we're celebrating with the presentations tonight from, from our adult learning and, and the partnership that we have with the city, watching out for us and helping out with Southwestern City Schools. As well as our professional development that I know and I see around the state that we are honored for. What comes out of Southwestern City Schools in many cases are superintendents of other school districts. And we, we really do wonders for our, for our staff, and, and that's appreciated. And then the third being Staff Appreciation Week, which we're going to celebrate because we certainly have one of the best staffs in Ohio. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Schreiner stole the words out of my mouth. You've had some time to travel together around the state and conferences. And everywhere we go, we run into educators in this district, other districts, school board members, superintendents that have all been professionally developed here, and they all say, no one does it better than we. And it's a shame that we lose some of those folks, but there are opportunities elsewhere. And, you know, we understand when people have to, you know, do things for their family. But folks we have here, I think, get A-grade professional development. We appreciate your team.
Before you wrap up, you want to jump back to two. I just want to highlight this for a second, because many of these trainings, five, ten years ago, this was required. You know, when you really look at the demands on staff, and as they go through this, the amount of time we have to tailor-make our professional development to what our local needs are, continue to diminish with about every, every legislative year. And so that's part of the reason that I think this is up here is to help you understand that there is a significant amount of training that's required and they go through on an annual basis, much of which is not determined locally. It's been legislative now, state law. So again, those might be in a variety of ways. But because the passion for it for most staff is the learning of boys and girls, and I want to make it better. And many of these things, while very important, are not in their passion, or where they would prefer to spend their time, as we do bloodborne pathogens for the innocent. So, but I, I wanted to hit that. The other piece, and just to amplify what you've already said. When you look at the areas where Southwestern tradition spends above state average, as far as percentage of our budget. There are typically two areas that are, in its actual staff, the number of people that we put to work with kids. And the second area is, is professional development. So when you typically look at the state reports, they're completely different owners. These are the areas this board has totally, this board, they do invest the dollars in. It's in the classroom and in the training staff, and I think it shows, and it shows through quality of the air and stuff. So thank you for your work. We're forward to that. And I know they continue to reach out to staff. That's what they need. And so we can tailor-make as much as we can for them flexibly. So thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we have Dr. Lucker, Staff Appreciation.
Good evening, President Caldwell, Vice President Schreiner, Mr. Bosso, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Martindale, Dr. Wise, and Mr. Garci. I do have the esteemed pleasure of declaring May eighteenth through twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three as Staff Appreciation Week in the Southwestern City School District. It has been said that bricks and mortar do not make a school. It is in fact the people that are part of our school district that make the magic every single day. It has never been more important to do the work that we do, and we never have needed them more. So without further ado, whereas a strong, effective public education system is essential to the success of all students. And whereas much of this success can be attributed to the qualified and dedicated teachers and staff members entrusted with nurturing the educational development of students. And whereas teachers and staff members serve as innovators, listeners, role models, motivators, coaches, advisors, and dreams, excuse me, and mentors. And whereas teachers and staff members work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, possibilities, and dreams. And whereas teachers and staff members continue to influence students long after their school days are only memories. And whereas teachers and staff members should be afforded high public esteem, reflecting the value of our community that places on education. Whereas the Southwestern City School District employs more than twenty-eight hundred teachers and staff members who serve approximately twenty-one hundred students and their families. And whereas the members of the Southwestern City School District's Board of Education recognize the importance of acknowledging all of our hard-working teachers and school staff members for their tireless dedication and commitment to the education of our students. Providing them with the tools to learn, grow, and thrive. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Southwestern City School District Board of Education hereby proclaims the week of May eighth through twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Staff Appreciation Week in the Southwestern City School District. And be it further resolved that the Southwestern City School District Board of Education commends and recognizes all its teachers and staff members and invites residents of the community to join them in thanking our school employees, providing our children and youth with a safe and nurturing learning environment. Thank you.
Dr. Lucker, next we'll have board reports. Public participation relative to agenda items, and some we have done. And next we'll have our legislative liaison report by Vice President Schreiner.
Thank you, President Caldwell. This evening, I'm going to highlight some major things that are happening that affect education at the State House. My entire report will be part of the minutes, and it's, it's quite substantial. The House Finance Committee voted to accept the substitute bill reflecting the first round of changes to House Bill thirty-three. The fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five biennial budget bill, the Fair School Funding Plan. Quote, "We are thrilled to see the House update the base cost inputs to fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two data." The House Finance Committee is expected to make another round of changes in this budget bill this week. The House is expected to pass its version of the budget by the end of the month. Members of the Ohio House will have an additional opportunity to submit changes to the substitute bill. The Ohio House Finance Committee will conclude its work with an omnibus amendment, a large amendment full of many smaller amendments, and a vote to move the bill out of committee and to the Rules and Reference Committee. The final House version of the budget is expected to be passed by the end of April. The Ohio Senate is expected to begin work on the biennial budget in early May. But I, I couldn't say it any better than Mr. Garci, who I'm, I'm going to potentially quote here. I think it makes it the clearest. The Ohio House of Representatives increased the governor's budget proposal by adding the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two cost factors to the Fair School Funding Plan, FSFP. Adding the inflationary cost factor is key to keeping the, the Fair School Funding Plan a viable solution for schools moving forward. The increase in the cost factor, coupled with the third and fourth year phase in of a six-year FSFP phase in, is a big step towards, forward to properly funding schools in the state of Ohio. Although this news is encouraging, the budget process is far from over. There are three more levels of approval before this becomes law in Ohio. The Senate Joint Conference Committee and the governor will all have to approve what has been presented by the House. That's the most important thing, I believe, that's happening for public schools in Ohio. Just to highlight a couple additional bills that are on the docket. House Bill one thirty-five, I won't read the sponsors because you're perfectly willing to go to the minutes for that. Which would require school districts to grant students excused absences from school for participation in 4H and FFA programs and activities. House Bill one thirty-nine, which would increase the penalties for assault if the victim is acting as a sports official or the assault is committed in retaliation for the victim's actions as a sports official. or the assault is committed in retaliation for the victim's actions as a sports official. House Bill one forty. Which would increase penalties for passing a school bus and allow the use of cameras on all school buses. I think that's all that I'm going to, to go into today. Feel free to read those minutes in, in entirety. That concludes my legislative report today.
Thank you, Vice President Schreiner. Now we'll move to, to the emergency for student staff achievement report.
Thank you, President Caldwell. I have five really exciting things to bring to our attention tonight in terms of student achievements. Congratulations to Grove City High School's NJROTC, who's recently named a recipient of the two thousand twenty-three ODE Purple Star Award. The Purple Star Award from the Ohio Department of Education recognizes schools that show a major commitment to students and families connected to our nation's military. Schools that earn the award will receive a Purple Star recognition to display on site. Congratulations to them for that. Also, congratulations to junior electrical trade students at the Southwestern Career Academy who recently received offer letters from twelve local businesses to work this summer and into next year as a part of our work-based learning opportunities. Congratulations to Central Crossing High School students Anna Sunuk and Grove City High School students Viv Rodriguez, Nathalie Mohica, and Alexandria Pinto, who were recognized by the Franklin County Board of Commissioners for exemplifying excellence in academic disciplines and/or visual and performing parts. And then we also want to say a big congratulations to the Southwestern Career Academy students who placed at the BPA in states in March. They will now be moving on to the nationals. That includes Misa So, who got second in digital media productions. She will now be competing in nationals as well. Bella Matic, who received a top ten spot for virtual photography. Colin Bryant, Kaylee O'Hara, Samaya Abdelkadar, and Mia Melendez of the Adobe User Experience Design XD Team, received third. And Brooke Dunn, I've got the BPA Marketing National Qualification, as well as Aiden Scott, who is a voting delegate. He is now in the national qualifications as well. And so I would like to say on behalf of the entire board that we wish them all the luck in competing in nationals. I'm sure I will be able to congratulate you. As far as student achievements, congratulations to Central Crossing High School student Anna Sunuk, whose oil painting entitled Modern Childhood is on display as a top two hundred and fifty feature at the Ohio Governor's Youth Art exhibit this month. And then just ahead of tomorrow night's PTA and the Board of Education hosted district awards gala. I just would like to congratulate all of the recipients and thank you for all that you do to facilitate education.
Next, under items for action, we have fiscal and operational management, Mr. Bosso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under fiscal and operational management tonight, we got nine items for action. The first is the revised permanent appropriations fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, exhibit X one. It's recommended the Board of Education approved the revised permanent appropriations. Item number two, investments and financial statements for March two thousand twenty-three, exhibit X two and X three. It's recommended in accordance with section one three five point one four of the Ohio Revised Code, the Board of Education approved March investments in cash positionary reports for the month of March two thousand twenty-three. As submitted, total investments three hundred and sixty-seven million, five hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-one cents. Interest earnings month-to-date, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Interest earnings year-to-date, five million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and seventy-nine cents. Interest rates vary from point one six zero to five point oh three percent. Item number three, payment of bills, exhibit X four. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the payment of the bills. Checks listed for the month of March two thousand twenty-three. Item number four, donations, exhibit X five. It's recommended the Board of Education accept the donations of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. As detailed in exhibit X five and authorize letters of appreciation to all the donors, especially Apple. Gave a big donation for the middle schools of two hundred something thousand. We really appreciate that. They're all appreciated no matter how big they are, but that was quite a substantial amount. Item number five, authorization to pay the bills in accordance with section fifty-seven oh five point one or four one of the Ohio Revised Code, exhibit X six. It is recommended the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to pay the bill during the march, which was not processed in accordance with section fifty-seven oh five point four one of the Ohio Revised Code. Item number six, with the agreement with Sheekley Uniservice. It's recommended the Board of Education enter to agreement with Sheekley Uniservice for participation in the group retrospective rating program for the January first, two thousand twenty-four through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four, rate year. Exhibit X eight, Sheekley Uniservice is a workers' compensation third party administrator that works with the schools and districts and other businesses throughout Ohio and the nation. They monitor our workers' compensation claims and help provide solutions to keep our claims down. We call it down, I'm sorry. The district has worked hard at providing safe workplace environments which only benefit our employees but also keeps our workers' compensation costs down. Item number seven, the agreement with the Auditor of State of Office. It's recommended the Board of Education entered an agreement with the Ohio Auditor of State's office to assist in preparation of the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, at the cost not to exceed twenty-one thousand each year, exhibit X eight. The annual comprehensive financial report is used primarily by investors when purchasing district bonds. Item number eight. Agreement with Ohio Health Corporation for Athletic Training Services. It's recommended the Board of Education entered a contract with the Ohio Health Corporation to provide athletic training services for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-eight school years at a cost of eighty thousand dollars per year. And that will be exhibit X nine. The Ohio Health Physicians Group supplies two licensed athletic trainers to each of the four high schools in the school district for home contests, regularly scheduled workouts, and practices along with other services that can be seen on the agenda, which is exhibit X nine. The district also gives from promotional consideration and advertising rights to the Ohio Health Physician Group with that agreement. Approval in lieu of transportation. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the payment in lieu of transportation list for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year as presented in exhibit X ten. And, I'm sorry, according to section thirty-two, twenty-seven point oh one of the Ohio Revised Code, the average cost of transportation per child in the state of Ohio in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year by the state Department of Education in the amount of five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Each year, the district must provide payment to residents to transport their children to school because the district can't provide transportation in a reasonable manner as found impractical to do so. The state of Ohio sets the standard on what is determined as impractical and also sets the rate at which the parents will be reimbursed for providing transportation to these students. None of these students attend our buildings. All of them attend either a private or parochial school or a community school. We provide transportation to some of these private parochial schools and community schools. However, it is impractical to do so with these specific, specific, specific students, sorry. We have a hundred and six students participating in the payment of lieu this year, which comes to fifty-seven thousand, eighty-six dollars and thirty cents total cost. After reviewing these items, Mr. President, I move them for approval.
Sir, do we have a second?
Second, Schreiner.
Second by Mrs. Martindale. Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Next, under items for action, we have policy with Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, President Caldwell. First, we have the second and final reading of policy fifty-four thirty point zero one, graduation recognitions. Then we have the first reading of two new policies, seventy-five forty point zero four, staff technology acceptable use and safety. And policy eighty-three hundred, continuity of organizational operations plan. Moving on, we have the first reading of replacement policy eighty-one twenty, volunteers. Then we get to the first reading of my favorite, two rescinded policies. They're very easy for me to read. Thirty-one twenty point zero nine volunteers, forty-two ten point zero nine volunteers. And finally, we have the first reading of ten revised policy. Policy twenty-one fourteen, meeting state performance indicators. Twenty-two seventy-one, college credit plus program. Fifty-three ten, student health services and requirements. Fifty-three fifty, student mental health and suicide prevention. Fifty-four sixty, graduation requirements. Fifty-five twelve, tobacco use prevention. Sixty-three twenty-five, procurement of federal grants funds. Seventy-four thirty-four, tobacco use prevention. Seventy-five forty point zero one, technology privacy. And finally, seventy-five forty point zero three, student technology acceptable use and safety. Having reviewed these items, I move them for passage.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Do we have a second?
Second, then.
Do you have any comments? There none? Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Next, under items for action, facilities development.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under items for action under facilities management, we just have two items tonight of approval of a lease agreement with the Buckeyes Boys Ranch. It's recommended the Board of Education approve a two-year lease agreement beginning January first of two thousand twenty-four with the Buckeyes Boys Ranch for educational space for annual payment of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. The other, the second, will be the resolution authorizing the Southwestern City School District to advertise and invitation for bids for the contract for the replacement of Styles Family Resource Center. Styles Family Resource Center needs additional programming space, which will be providing larger classroom space and better air quality to reduce the risk of viral transmission in response to COVID nineteen, the cost of which will save fifty thousand dollars. Work includes construction of replacement of classroom facilities associated with HVAC system. And to pay for most of the cost of these projects, the Board of Education, the Southwestern City Schools intend to utilize the federal funds made available under the American Rescue Plan of elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds of two thousand twenty-one, which is the SFR funds, most people recognize it as. The Southwestern City School District's administration staff is hereby authorized and directed to do all things necessary to advertise and issue invitations to bids for the contract for the replacement of Styles Family Resource Center. As JBM said earlier about bricks and mortars don't make the school, if anybody had seen that building. I'm going to have to be the one to say that building needs replacing. After reviewing these items, I move them for passage.
Second, Schreiner.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Other than I, I agree with bricks and mortar. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bosso. Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Absolutely, yes. Next, under items for action, student schools and community, Ms. Martindale.
All right, so thank you, President Caldwell. I've got a couple items here that we need to go over. First of all, Central Crossing High School Girls Basketball Team is requesting to travel to Finley, Ohio this summer. No school will be missed. All expenses are paid by students, parents, and boosters. I also have Franklin Heights High School marching band. They are going to travel to Rio Grande, Ohio. Also this summer, they will miss no school and once again, the expenses are paid by students, parents, boosters, fundraising. Grove City High School choir and orchestra students are going to travel to Orlando, Florida and be part of that World of the World Parade again. It's exciting. January twelfth through the fifteenth, students will miss one day of school. All expenses are paid by fundraising boosters. Grove City High School marching band is requesting to travel to Millersburg, Ohio this August for band camp at the Sky Blue Ranch. They will not be missing any school. Transportation is private automobiles. Expenses are paid by students, parents, and fundraising. Grove City High School students are requesting to travel to Mexico during our next spring break, March twenty-third through twenty-ninth. And they will be missing no school. We should invite airplane. All expenses are paid by students and parents. Lastly, I have Westland High School Winter Guard students going to travel to Highland Heights, Kentucky on April thirteenth. They have one day of school and all expenses were paid by the boosters. So having reviewed all these items, I do them for passage.
You know, I, I love that these trips are taking place. The one to Mexico kind of worries me with everything going on in Mexico, but if the parents believe it's all right for them to go, I'm in support of that. I'll pray for them safe travels and, and have a great experience, but it kind of gives me an uneasy feeling. Just to let everybody know, but I will definitely approve this. Oh, seconded, thank you, sorry.
Now we'll have discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please. Ms. Martindale. Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Next, under items for action, we have our personnel board, Mr. Schreiner.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the board agenda for Monday evening are ten personnel items involving six hundred and fifty-one persons. This includes twenty-one certificated and administrative resignations, thirty-eight administrative employments, seven certificated changes in employment status, eighty-eight certificated employments, eleven classified resignations, thirteen classified changes in employment status, thirty-five classified employments, eighty-two certificated reemployments, eleven non-renewal of limited contracts, and three hundred and forty-five substitute resignations. After reviewing these action items, I move them for passage at this time.
Thank you, Vice President Schreiner. Do we have a second? I don't know, I should have heard the bell.
We're allowed to do that. Give it to Mrs. Martindale.
Okay, Mrs. Martindale, it is, all right. Any discussion? There none? Can we have roll call, please? Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Dr. Hayward. There you are. Any guests you'd like to introduce?
Yes. Good evening, President Caldwell, Vice President Schreiner, board members, Dr. Wise and Mr. Garside. It is my pleasure to introduce Ryan Washington. Ryan will become the new principal at Norton Middle School. He comes to us with three years of experience as an assistant principal at Pleasant View Middle School. He also was an intern in Columbus and he also taught for thirteen years in Columbus in English and socials.
Good evening. Thank you, board members, for being with us evening. And I just want to express my extreme gratitude for this endorsement, this opportunity to serve the amazing students of Southwestern City Schools and between Central and Middle School. And I'm extremely excited for next year and the upcoming school year and I'm very excited to be out in Wildcat.
Anybody else you want to recognize?
Anyone else?
Yes. My family back there, my wife, Sarah, my daughter Remy, my daughter Nola, my father Dean Washington, and my mother Joy. My father-in-law, Tim Van Worris, and my mother-in-law, Monda May.
Don't say they're fairly few, but these two are good telephone buzzes in first. Family. Just no Steve Harvey. All right, next, moving on to public participation relative to non-agenda items. First up is going to be Jeffrey Bone, I think I'm pronouncing that right.
Tony.
Tony?
Yeah, Boni.
Sorry, thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Jeff Boni. I'm a longtime Grove City resident, retired state employee, husband of Southwestern City Schools teacher, father of three, and a federal, state, and local taxpayer. We, as a family, have been engaged and supportive of the Southwestern City School District ever since our first child, Claire. Mr. Schreiner knows, well, attended kindergarten back in nineteen ninety-seven. Since that time, all three of our kids have attended elementary, intermediate, and middle schools. And have proudly graduated from Central Crossing High School. The only school board meetings we've attended over those years were a few times when our kids were receiving various academic awards. I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus. And we're not chronic complainers in search of some kind of social media thing like Jesse Allison. None of my confidence lines is around him. But I'm here to raise the awareness of the community, and in my opinion, it's out of control. And dire need is fixed. Not certain you're fully aware of the classroom climate and the state of student behavior at Bolton Crossing Elementary. His concerns include behavior on buses at recess and during lunch break. Gay has taught at the Southwest City School District, Southwestern, for almost twenty years and taught in another district for ten years before that. Throughout her career, it's been very apparent with her patient that when her patience has been tested. After thirty-seven years of marriage, I'm quite good at detecting her stress level. I can tell right away when she has had a rough day. Those kind of days were rare, and these challenges were usually resolved quickly. She's always loved her job and her students, and this is what has made it easy for her to be on a new every day. I have read the portion of the SWCSD policy manual pertaining to student code of conduct, section fifty-five hundred. I don't need to read the whole section, but two paragraphs need to be reiterated and highlighted for this meeting. The first paragraph reads, in quote, "Good conduct is based on respect and consideration for the rights of others. Students will be expected to conduct themselves in such a way that the rights of others are not violated. The students of Southwest City School Districts will conform with school regulations and accept direction from authorized school personnel." The second paragraph reads, "The board has zero tolerance for violent, disruptive, or inappropriate behavior by its students, i.e. the board will not tolerate violent, disruptive, and inappropriate behavior by its students and such behaviors as set forth in the student code of conduct. These are very reasonable expectations, in my view, but I suspect they're being violated on a regular or even daily basis. And I get the sense that the district policy is not being enforced and discipline is not being implemented effectively." Next, Jay will provide more details and examples of reality as it currently exists at Bolton Crossing Elementary that supports my suspicions. Thank you for listening.
Next, we have Gabe Boni.
Good evening. My name is Gabe Boni, and I have been a school teacher for almost twenty years in the district. Currently, I'm teaching fourth graders at Bolton Crossing. As Jeff mentioned, we are here tonight to draw attention to the severe behavior and discipline problems that are plaguing Bolton Crossing. As traumatic as this has been, the real tragedy is that this is not an isolated event. Make no mistake, something is amiss at Bolton Crossing. I've seen a huge rise in aggressive, violent, disrespectful, defiant behaviors. And sadly, we are often not holding students accountable for their actions. Some say it's a result of COVID, with the breakdown of the family structure or access to social media. Regardless as to the cause, by not holding students accountable for their actions, the effect is we are not serving those students well, and we most certainly are not meeting the needs of those students who do come to school ready and willing to learn. This disruption of learning is allowed to continue, and the disruptions are frequent and severe. Chairs are being thrown in hallways and in the office. Loud screaming and shouting, banging and pounding disrupt the day all the time. Projects displayed in hallways to celebrate student work are routinely ripped off the walls. Computers and keyboards have been vandalized and destroyed in the main office conference room. Bathrooms have been repeatedly vandalized. Just last week, the metal toilet paper holder was yanked from the wall three days in a row. The hard plastic protective case for the hallway thermostat was recently punched and broken. Classrooms are being evacuated to avoid unsafe situations. Cursing at staff and other students is increasingly frequent. Physical fighting occurs on the playground, in the hallways, in the bathrooms, in the gym, and even in the classrooms. Desks are being flipped. Students frequently walk out of classrooms without permission. Blatant insubordination and disrespect for authority with zero accountability is the norm. This cannot be our new normal. My heart breaks for those students who do want to make good choices. There are still many students who want to learn and are ready and ripe for instruction. They are not getting the attention they deserve. These students have to excuse, ignore, and put up with too much. They see the kids fighting, and they see them right back in class when nothing happened. They endure the racial slurs, cursing, and vile vulgar language while the offenders suffer zero consequences. They witness the students walking out of the room without permission, blatantly refusing to come back only to roam the halls or hang out in the main office. The main office has become a playground for misbehavior. Secretaries, nurses, and med monitors are being tasked with trying to corral and calm behaviors. Instructional aides are routinely pulled from their real duties to help with extreme behaviors. By the way, this usually involves shadowing students with no recourse to intervene. Many just show up in the office after leaving classrooms of their own accord. This is when chairs are overturned, garbage cans are ended, papers grabbed and thrown off desks. Cursing and shouting is typical. Some of these students in the office are waiting to see the principal with a discipline referral. Our principal, along with our P V I S team, drafted a behavioral referral form this year to streamline the process for when a student does get referred. At this point, it might sound like I'm piling on, but my intent is not to attack the schools, but it is to beg and ask for your help. Jeff and I don't know the answer. The teachers don't know the answer. Our principal doesn't know the answer. All we know for sure is that the lack of accountability for behaviors that disrupt the learning of others is out of control. We need your help. We look forward to working with this board to solve these issues. I have to end now as my time is up, but what we allow today will continue tomorrow. This cannot be our new normal.
Next, on public participation, we have Mr. Weaver, Brian Weaver.
Thank you. My name is Brian Weaver. Thank you for the opportunity to speak at Southwest School Board meeting. Miss Gabby, I apologize. Now, this is Grove City Police. The school board has failed you. I'm a former I T for Grove City Police Department, and I've seen numerous public record and police records not being provided to the public and school board and mayor back there, Mayor Ike is fully aware of these issues in the police department. As you see, the police chief just resigned last week, and the former police chief resigned less than six months ago after Mr. Retain was arrested with sexual involvement with thirteen-year-old girl in Southwest School District. In the school, and Grove City Police were fully aware because Mr. Retain was in Grove City Police Department in two thousand fifteen for a trafficking involved investigation, and they refused to provide an investigation report and video of Mr. Retain in the investigation. The reason I know that is because I saw Mr. Retain personally in the school police department in two thousand fifteen for the trafficking involved investigation. And I also personally saw the video as the I T manager downloaded for the internal investigation. And the city still refused to provide investigation, copy that video. And went to the website, makeglovecitygreat.com to see my reports and public record that they're not making public know. And Mayor Ike is fully aware of this. Maybe the fifty thousand dollars has money for schools, but that's just speculation on my part. Mr. Weiss, I do agree with you, and I appreciate you looking at the programs and resources that have no cost to the district. I have offered disability awareness and bully training since two thousand twenty, no response from the school board. And again, I offered no cost to provide this training as a disability advocate. And I also have been offered to sit down with a board member with coffee, and I've still not been offered an invitation for coffee. So I'm still waiting for that. And Mr. Boz, I do agree that there are drug issues in Mexico, but I also believe that the biggest drug issue in the schools that you should be aware of as Grove City School Resource Officers are not permitted to report any drug issues. And I go to school resource officers saying that they can only report drug issues if they see actual drugs, but no dealings or other things like that. So the police department is tired. Over eighty percent of Grove City Police Department has resigned. As you saw, Chief Busco and Chief Bamba just resigned recently as of last Monday because I brought up concern to cybersecurity, the deletion of Grove City Department records. As one of the board members' brother, the Department Director, his name is Mike Boz. And he was fully aware of the cyber security attack that deleted all the records. That's called an house to be flooded. Mr. Weiss, I do agree with you. I appreciate you bending up that second slide there regarding the school policies, code of conduct that Jeff mentioned. Again, I think there's complete failure in the Southwest School Board to teach these policies. You say you have policy procedures done yearly. You say you have sexual harassment done yearly. But again, we've seen three Grove City school teachers, I'm sorry, two Grove City school teacher employees have been arrested for sexual harassment or sexual things with children in past year. And you know, the opinion lawsuit with Mr. Retain that is still pending since two thousand twenty-one. But I agree, and I would recommend that your bullying policy in your professional conduct, in your code of professional conduct, it began with a five-year. I recommend that to be yearly because it appears to be your teachers, especially Mr. Retain and several teachers in this Southwest school are not aware of the policy. They're not aware of the policy. In the last city council meeting that Mayor Ike was in attendance, Stephen Smith admitted that a canine officer attacked a female inside a police department that I personally witnessed. Again, they do not provide an investigation report, and this canine dog is also is in show and tell in the schools in Southwest School District. And you guys are fully aware of this in two thousand nineteen, I emailed you, said two thousand nineteen that a canine dog assaulted a female inside a police department. And city attorney Stephen Smith admitted in the last council meeting that the canine dog incident did occur. The video of that is on my website at makeglovecitygreat.com, and also you'll notice you also notice there's been increase in drugs, and the city of Grove City have deleted all the drug records prior to two thousand twenty-one. The Grove City Police Department is not being transparent to the public in the drug issues in Southwest School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Next, we have items for discussion. A discussion by one.
Mr. President, I would just like to thank Jeff and Dave for presenting what they did. I know it's hard to get up there and talk about this, but it is an issue. I hope more teachers get up here and speak about this because something does need to be done. And the things you said about it's not just the kid that's causing the trouble, it affects all the kids that are there to try to learn. So please keep coming back. I promise you, I will do whatever I can to help you out. I promise.
We adjourn.
Second?
Second, Pam.
Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. So. Ms. Martindale. Schreiner?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell. Yes. All right, thanks everyone for coming tonight. We appreciate your time.